Okay? You will not do anything to put black lives in danger. And that means antagonizing police officers, destroying property. You will not do that, especially without even speaking to organizers first, okay? Are we all clear on that?
Yes!
Are we all clear on that?
Yes!
Alright, so we're gonna do some hand signals for everybody here. You know, throw my hand up like this. Everybody should mimic it as we stop. People in the back, you should mimic the same thing because a lot of times, people would be walking right into people and didn't even know they were supposed to stop because either A, they wasn't paying attention, or nobody else threw their hands up to mimic them. Okay? Say booty cheeks, that just means get close, get tight, get close, get tight. You know what I'm saying, that booty cheeks?
Get close, get tight.
You know what I'm saying? This means quiet down. For my people in the front, whoever is. You know, she's going out like this, but slow down with me. No, this is America, it's not a smart city. Alright, I've been running all my life, trying to run, okay? Trying to put on my shoes, okay? So let's stay together. I appreciate everyone you guys coming out here, like I always say. I appreciate all you guys, because without you guys, we wouldn't be here. You know what I'm saying? You guys make this what it is. Mr. Peterson, thank you for coming to find us today. We was gonna come find you, but you made it a little easier, thank you. So yeah, man, together is how we started, together is how we finished, together is how we win. You know? That's how we get this done. That's how we been getting this done. Who got our back?
We got our back!
Who got our back?
We got our back!
We got our back!
We got our back!
We all we got!
We all we need!
We all we got!
We all we need!
We all we got!
We all we need!
That's it, that's all I got.
You don't have to keep it on the field, boys. I'll say nothing, that's just right. Everyone's happy eventually. I do the morning marches. I would really like if you guys would come out to the morning march. We would really appreciate it. Bring us off. Bring your animals. Please come out to the morning marches, please. I'm Mara, by the way.
Hi Mara!
Hi!
Hi guys.
So for context, Alex Peterson is in the blue shirt, right here. He just showed up. He's gonna be joining us on the march to his house. So, we'll see how this goes.
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Black lives matter!
All day?
Every day!
All day?
Every day!
All day?
Every day!
All day?
Every day!
Do you fund SPD, how much?
Fifty percent at least!
Do you fund SPD, how much?
Fifty percent at least!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Our lives matter!
Where should that money go?
If you're watching right now, could you do me a solid? I need a little favor. Can you please share the stream in any neighborhood groups that you are affiliated with? Whether that be Seattle District 3, District 4, District 5? Any of the BLM groups? I usually do it myself, but the option timed out on my phone when I was getting it set up. If you could do me a favor and just share it with like 3 groups? That would be amazing. Thank you, guys.
No, no, you, yeah!
Don't forget, number 4!
No, no, you, yeah!
For context, I don't think we know what his angle is. Uh, he kinda just showed up. So...
Black lives matter!
Let's see if I can get a close-up of him without attacking him.
What do we want for number 5?
But he is definitely in the crowd.
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
Shut it down!
Alright, he's coming up.
Black lives matter!
Right there.
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter! No KKK, no racist USA! No cops, no KKK, no racist USA!
I said, no cops, no KKK, no racist USA! No cops, no KKK, no racist USA!
Got the Car Brigade.
Black lives matter!
Locked and ready to go.
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Say it louder!
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
No justice?
No peace!
No racism!
Police!
I said, no justice!
No peace!
No racism!
Police!
Wait, can we have a little break again?
Yeah.
Oh, no! I am so sorry, Mom.
It's okay.
Okay, okay.
Alright, we got approval from Mom to say the A-word.
No racism!
Police!
Cause who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
All day?
Every day!
All day?
Every day!
Kristen, do you not believe it's important to teach your children the importance of, or the... What it means to be civically engaged? I think it's great to bring kids. Thank you, Sarah. We've got our legal observers out here on both sides. We've got Alex Peterson in the crowd next to the tambourine guy. Let me see if I can snag him again for you guys. Look out for the blue shirt, it's bright blue.
Shut it down! Shut it down! Shut it down! Black lives matter! Black lives matter! Every day! Every day! Every day! Every day!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
No cops and a racist system!
No cops and a racist system!
No bad cops and a better revolution!
No bad cops and a better revolution!
No bad cops and a racist system!
No bad cops and a racist system!
No bad cops and a better revolution!
No bad cops and a better revolution!
Are we fired?
No!
In the back, in the back, are we fired?
No!
Are we scared?
No!
Are we scared?
No!
Who's scared?
SPD!
Who's scared?
SPD!
Who's scared?
SPD!
Do you fund SPD, how much?
Fifty percent at least!
And where should that money go?
To black communities!
Free, who should you free?
All the protesters!
Don't forget, number 4!
No, you, yeah! Jenny Durkin to resign!
What do we want for number 5?
Jenny Durkin to resign!
Black lives matter!
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
All day?
Every day!
Thank you, Jason.
Every day!
All day?
Every day!
All day?
Every day!
Give me a B.
So we are out here on the...
Give me an L.
University of Washington campus.
Give me an L. What does that spell?
L, I got your L.
What does that spell?
L, I got your L.
Give me a B.
B, I got your B, I got your B.
Give me an L.
L, I got your L, I got your L.
Give me an L.
L, I got your L, I got your L.
What does that spell?
L, I got your L.
What does that spell?
L, I got your L.
Give me a P.
P, I got your P, I got your P.
Give me an L.
L, I got your L, I got your L.
Give me an L.
L, I got your L, I got your L.
What does that spell?
L, I got your L.
What does that spell?
Black lives matter! That's wrong. That's wrong.
Black lives matter!
Thank you, Tasha.
Black lives matter!
Thank you, Kimber.
Every day! Every day! Every day! Every day! Black lives matter! Fifty percent at least!
And where should that money go?
To black communities! All the protesters!
No, no, you, yeah!
Jenny Durkin to resign! Jenny Durkin to resign! We charge you with genocide! We charge you with genocide! Black lives matter! Black lives matter! Every day! Every day! Every day!
Carla, if there's more good police than bad police, let's say you've got 1,000 good cops and let's say 10 bad ones. But let's say that 1,000 good cops doesn't... Uh, or rather, let's say they protect the bad cops. Then you've got 1,010 bad cops. Come on now. I could've said that more eloquently, but you get the point.
Ain't no shot or anywhere! We on the straight way to freedom! SPD, we don't need them! We on the straight way to freedom! SPD, we don't need them! He had his baby in his car! 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 He had his baby in his car!
So we're going to City Councilmember Alex Peterson's house. We are escorting him there. I think he got wind that we were going there and he showed up and said, "I'll just, I'll march with you." So, props to him, I guess. Be cooler if like, he would actually vote to meet the demands of the community. But sure, performative allyship. We'll settle for that. Psych. It's only gonna bring these folks out in full force next time.
When I say SPD, you say?
Take accountability!
SPD!
Take accountability!
SPD!
Take accountability!
SPD!
Take accountability!
SPD!
So we are on 45th and 17th Avenue Northeast. We are walking through Greek Row. Here in the College District. University of Washington. And we're walking pretty slow, so I've got time to block the trolls.
Black lives matter!
When I say, "Who do we protect?", you say, "Black youth." Who do we protect?
Black youth!
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 When I say, "Who do we protect?", you say, "Black felons." Who do we protect?
Black felons!
Who do we protect?
Black felons!
When I say, "Who do we protect?", you say, "Black trans women." Who do we protect?
Black trans women!
Who do we protect?
Black trans women!
When I say, "Who do we protect?", you say, "Black educators." Who do we protect?
Black educators! Black educators!
When I say, "Who do we protect?", you say, "Black women." Who do we protect?
Black women! Black women!
Man, it got dark out here fast, huh? So Alex Peterson is still right here next to the tall gentleman with the mask on. In that bright blue shirt.
All day?
Every day!
And we are nice enough to walk him home. Alright, let's make our way back up to the front. Think the visibility will be a little bit better back up here. There we go.
Out of your homes and into the streets! If black lives matter? If black lives matter?
Prove it!
If black lives matter?
Prove it!
If black lives matter? Prove it! Out of your homes and into the streets!
Out of your homes and into the streets!
Out of your homes and into the streets! If black lives matter? Prove it! If black lives matter? Prove it! Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Do you fund SPD, how much?
Fifty percent at least!
And where should that money go? Three hulkers in his knee?
All the protesters!
Don't forget, number 4?
No, you, yeah!
Off of your balcony into the streets!
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 Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Hold on, we see y'all, we see all of y'all. Who's lives matter? Do you guys think black lives matter? Because I know you hear me. In the middle of a pandemic? Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Saying you're not here for black lives. A part of the problem! Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
If black lives matter?
So if you look really carefully, you can see Alex right back there.
If black lives matter?
Prove it!
If black lives matter?
Prove it!
Off of your balcony into the streets!
Off of your balcony into the streets!
Out of your homes and 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 into the streets!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Off of your balcony into the streets!
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 Off of your porch and 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 into the streets!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Hey, 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 you three, right there, you three. Do you guys think black lives matter? Say, "Come march with us." You're sitting on your porch doing nothing. Everybody say accountability! Accountability! If black lives matter?
Prove it!
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 March with us!
They're going back inside.
March with us!
March with us!
March with us!
March with us!
Alright, we got a bright intersection, so I'm gonna grab a clip of Alex here. He's gonna walk right past, boom, there he is. Oh, look, he's coming to... Looks like he's coming to join us.
In the middle of this grassy area. Everybody, family.
Family!
Family.
Family!
Love.
Love!
Love.
Love!
DS.
DS!
Love.
Love!
DS.
I'm gonna get out of the road here.
Love.
Love!
DS.
DS!
Love.
Love!
DS.
DS!
Love.
Love!
Summer season!
All year!
Summer season!
All year!
Summer season!
All year!
Summer season!
All year!
So the Car Brigade is coming down the promenade here. They are all numbered. I don't wanna get their license plate, so I wanna be careful, but they all have numbers on their cars. Just so we know that they are easily identified. So we know that they're not a threat. We've had cars out here try to run people over. In fact, one was successful, right? So, you heard them just say it's summer season all year, referring to Summer Taylor, the young person who got their life tragically taken away from them onto life fourth. Alright, we got Alex right here. Let me see if he's willing to say something. "Hi, thanks for being out here. I'm live streaming, I was wondering if I could put you on the livestream." "Sure." Okay, I'll flip it around. Alright, everybody, this is Seattle City Councilmember Alex Peterson from District 4.
Yes.
Uh, what brought you out here today?
Black Lives Matter. You guys have been marching every day and I knew you were gonna be in my neighborhood, so I wanted to join you.
Fantastic. And what do you think of the climate and energy so far?
It's very positive. Everybody's sticking together, being peaceful, and trying to bring more people out to support the cause.
Can we expect to see future marches?
I would like to do that, yes, thank you.
Alright, fantastic. How do you feel the budget vote went today?
I think it was an important vote today. I think we're reallocating tens of millions of dollars. We're shrinking the police force and there're gonna be more votes like this and it's an important down payment toward reimagining public safety.
Now, quick question. Is my understanding that you did vote in the negative with respect to the disbandment of the navigation team? Is that correct?
I voted in favor of pulling the police out of the navigation team.
Okay.
The vote to then also remove more dollars from it. I was not willing to do that right now, but it did pass 5 to 4.
Now, what would it take to turn that nay vote into a yay vote? What would we take? Does it take your constituents sending you emails, phone calls, more people showing up in the streets? What is gonna ultimately be able to change your mind then?
Well, we wanted to see, well, the four of us who voted against it, I think we wanted to see what would happen when the police were removed from the navigation team. So have some, you know, six months of data on that to see if we were getting more homeless people into housing that way.
Okay, sure. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you know if I have any more questions.
Alright.
Thanks, Alex. Well, that was Seattle City Councilmember Alex Peterson. And I kinda froze there for a minute, but hopefully I'll have another better question to ask him. If any of you guys wanna ask Alex Peterson a question, please post it in the comments and I will ask him. He's right here, so we've got nothing but time. We're walking all the way to his house and I think we've got a couple miles, so let me know. Jillian, that's a good question. We're gonna leave Alex alone for a minute until I come up with my questions. We're gonna go up to the front here and... Right behind you guys, pardon me.
Do you fund SPD, how much?
Fifty percent at least!
And where should that money go? And where should that money go? And who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
And who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Three hulkers in his knee?
All the protesters!
Three hulkers in his knee?
All the protesters!
And who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
And who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
What do we want for number 4?
Jenny Durkin to resign!
What do we want for number 4?
Jenny Durkin to resign!
Off the sidewalk into the streets!
Off the sidewalk into the streets!
If black lives matter?
Prove it!
If black lives matter?
Prove it!
March with us!
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 Everybody say accountability?
Accountability.
Oh, I lied, never mind, they're not being... Okay, anyway. Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Do you fund SPD, how much?
Fifty percent at least!
Yeah, Nikita, you gotta love the performative allyship. I mean, literally, it doesn't get much more peak Seattle than that. Throw up the BLM sign in your front yard while you gentrify the neighborhood. You attend a Black Lives Matter march to your own home while refusing to defund the police, right? Kind of a mindfuck, I'll be honest with you. It's almost like a version of gaslighting.
It's kind of a mindfuck, I'll be honest with you. It's almost like a version of gaslighting. Jenny Durkin, you can't hide!
We charge you with genocide!
Jenny Durkin, you can't hide!
We charge you with genocide!
Jenny Durkin, you can't hide!
We charge you with genocide!
Jenny Durkin, you can't hide!
We charge you with genocide!
And who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Who's lives matter?
Black lives matter!
Give me a P.
P, I got your P, I got your P.
Give me an L.
L, I got your L, I got your L.
Give me an F.
F, I got your F, I got your F.
What does that spell?
Black lives matter!
What does that spell?
Black lives matter!
Give me a P.
P, I got your P, I got your P.
Give me an L.
L, I got your L, I got your L.
Give me an F.
F, I got your F, I got your F.
What does that spell?
Black lives matter!
What does that spell?
Black lives matter!
We will! Fire all those racist cops!
We will!
Fire all those racist cops!
We will!
Fire all those racist cops!
We will!
Fire all those racist cops! If we don't get it? If we don't get it. If we don't get it. If we don't get it.
Shut it down.
If we don't get it.
Shut it down.
Whose life matters?
Black lives matter.
Whose lives matter?
Black lives matter.
Say that louder!
Black lives matter.
Whose lives matter? Everybody move to the middle, to the middle, to the middle. Everybody move to the middle, to the middle, to the middle. Stand in the grass, come on now, bitch, here's the grass. If black lives matter.
Groove it!
If black lives matter.
Groove it!
If black lives matter.
Groove it!
If black lives matter.
I just want to clarify, while I have you guys on the stream, this is the same group that's been out here every day, day in, day out, leading the same chants, same marches. Uh, this is the same group that went to Seattle Police Chief Carmen Best's home. I should say one of her homes, she has multiple, uh, in Snohomish County, uh, a few days ago. You might remember, there was a bunch of articles about it, about how aggressive protesters went and harassed and terrorized the police chief's neighborhood, uh, late night. Let's be clear, it was like daytime, it was the golden hour. So it was during the day, um, it's this group, we're out here marching with the council member. Uh, this is the same group that's had many, many, many sit-ins and conversations with other council members on the march. They had a conversation with Deborah Wires's daughter last night, very peaceful, very cordial. Um, so, you know, it's just verifiably false that the Seattle Police Chief, uh, her letter making these claims about them being aggressive, uh, when in fact, they were met with, uh, practically an armed militia, uh, in their neighborhood. And Police Chief Carmen Best lauded and applauded and thanked her neighbors for standing up to these aggressive, uh, aggressive protesters, I think is how she referred to them best, so, um, just, you know, just because she's a black woman does not mean that she's not actively harming black women, right? Uh, because what's happening is, all these neighborhood groups are hearing from is the elected officials, and the elected officials are saying, oh, well, these people are violent, these people are dangerous. And then what we have is a Trayvon Martin situation, right? We have an Ahmaud Arbery situation, where we have these neighborhood vigilantes out here with their guns, trying to, uh, protect themselves, trying to protect their property, trying to protect who knows what. And you know what happens? People die over a bag of Skittles. You know what happens? People die over a hoodie, right? So it is not only morally irresponsible, it is dangerous. It's absolutely dangerous for Chief Carmen Best to make in the claims that she did about this group right here. And I cannot stress that enough. She needs to have a real reckoning with her words and with her ask to demand that the council supports her. Because if the Seattle City Council members come out and supported the chief and say, you're right, these are aggressive people, they are dangerous, we do need neighborhood vigilantes to show up with their armed militia, somebody's going to die. In fact, somebody already has died because of the resentment from local law enforcement, from Washington State Patrol, from the Sheriff's Department, posting that All Lives Splatter meme the same day or day after, I should say, in response to Summer Taylor getting murdered on the highway. Absolutely repugnant that she's allowed to get away with making those claims without issuing a very public, very public apology. I've been out here with these people just about every day for the last sixty-something days. They preach nonviolence every single time we go out, every time. And I'm not one to come for a black woman in a leadership position, even if I strongly disagree with her. I'm a white man, it's not my place. I will come for Jenny Durkin, but I gotta tell you, Chief Carmen Best is now putting these people, my friends, these protesters' lives at risk. Because she's trying to get every neighborhood elected representative to sign on to this message, to say that these people are aggressive, that they are violent, that they're intent on destruction. That's the furthest thing from the truth. And you know what happens when those council members sign on to that kind of letter? It emboldens every single homeowner, every single resident, every single person living in this community. It emboldens them to come out with their guns and take matters into their own hands. Because now, their elected representative, their chief of police, their mayor stands with them and supports that action.
March with us! March with us! March with us! March with us!
Hey, they're coming down.
Out of your window and into the street!
Protests by their very nature are not necessarily peaceful, right? They're supposed to be disrupted. You disturb the peace, no justice, no peace. It could be a nonviolent protest, but I shouldn't say peaceful. It's a nonviolent protest. Because we're waking people up. Both physically, intellectually, spiritually. We want freedom, freedom. Also, a march with a permit is nothing more than a parade. This is a protest. And we have the First Amendment right to protest. We pay for these streets with our tax dollars. I went to this university. I have every right to be taken out this street as much as I want, and so do these people.
We're going around, we're going walk around.
Let's check in with our guy Alex. I know, I'm working on the mod thing, I'm sorry, you guys. Where's our guy Alex? Where did he go? Uh-oh, oh, there he is, he's over there. He's still here. All right, I'm gonna have to switch sides. I know the comments are insufferable, you guys, but one thing I try to say, um, in response to the racist trolls, is that every comment they leave, it adds to the search engine optimization algorithm on Facebook, so they're actually helping amplify the message, so. At least that's something.
Alex, we need proof that you're here. Councilmember asking you to join us.
Talk to your city council member! Sorry. There's Alex Peterson passing out literature, all right.
Yeah!
Yeah! Let's see if we can get a close-up on the literature. Can I see your piece of paper?
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, nice. That's, uh, just want to get a clip of that. Thank you, man.
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate you. You guys, Alex is toe-tapping. See the toe-tapping? Hold on. He's having fun. So, for context, Alex Peterson has a full stack of those, uh, little leaflet pamphlets, which, uh, says, "Demand." Your constituents. It basically says, "Call on Alex Peterson to meet the five demands, to meet the community demands." So, it sounds to me like Alex Peterson isn't convinced that his district is on board with these demands. So he's out here as an individual, passing the leaflets out to folks on Greek Row and to the neighbors along the way. So, maybe Alex Peterson as an individual supports the demands. He just needs a little bit more support from his neighbors. So, uh, it sounds to me like there's a case to be made for a call to District Four to start sending in emails. And to give you guys an explanation, we are allowing the car brigade to come through each time we get to the end of another block. And this is a means of keeping folks safe. There have been a number of threats, uh, from residents in their cars, including, uh, police officers. Uh, Molly Clark, who has driven through the crowd of protesters a couple of times, who now no longer works for the police department. It might have been the sheriff's department, I don't remember, I think it was the Seattle Police Department. Uh, so, the car brigade, if you don't already know, is a way to literally form a human, or excuse me, a vehicle shield around us as we march through the streets.
When I say Seattle, you say first. Seattle.
First.
Seattle.
First.
Seattle.
First.
Seattle.
First.
Seattle.
First.
Seattle.
First.
When I say say her name, you say Charlene Lyles. Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
Say it louder.
Charlene Lyles.
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles!
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles!
Say her name.
Charlene Lyles.
When I say say his name, you say Sean Fier. Say his name.
Sean Fier!
Say his name.
Sean Fier!
Say his name.
Sean Fier!
In the back, say his name.
Sean Fier!
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 Whose life matters?
Black lives matter!
Whose life matters?
Black lives matter!
Whose life matters?
Black lives matter!
Whose life matters? When I say say her name, you say Breonna Taylor.
Alex is going to home, almost to his house.
So we're almost to Alex Peterson's house. I'm gonna interview TK real fast. Hey, yo, TK, hop on my live, say something.
Say her name.
Talk to the people.
What's up? We got Alex to come out with us.
Say her name.
Alex decided to come out with us. See, this is real democracy. We are the definition of real democracy.
That's exactly why we marched to the council members' houses.
Period.
Period. We're making change out here.
Change, you see? One council member at a time, trust us. Seattle first. Seattle first.
We on the straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them. We on the straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them. We on the straight way to freedom. Straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them. SBD, we don't need them. We on the straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them. She had a baby on the way. Had a baby on the way. She had a baby on the way. Had a baby on the way. She had a baby on the way. She had a baby on the way. And you shot her anyway. And you shot her anyway. We on the straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them. We on the straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them. She had a baby in the car. 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 We on the straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them. We on the straight way to freedom. SBD, we don't need them.
I forgot to share this little tidbit with you guys. I, uh, I got hit with pepper spray really, really, really bad a couple of weeks ago and, uh, I forgot to wash my jacket and I'm wearing it tonight for the first time and my body is on fire. It's terrible. The effects of this last for so long. All right, there's Alex. He's having a good time. Let's see if I can get a screenshot. Can someone get a screenshot of this for me? See if I can get a better one. Sorry, I don't mean to be all up in your face. Just standing right where I want to be standing.
Yeah.
Thank you. There we go, there's a screenshot. Thank you, guys. Please get that screenshot.
Charlene Lyles! Charlene Lyles! Charlene Lyles! Charlene Lyles!
Does anyone know the story of Charlene Lyles?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
So, Charlene Lyles was called to the cops because of, uh, uh, a possible rape perjury at her home. So what happened was when the cops arrived, they ended up shooting her in her home.
Sorry.
She was pregnant and they shot her in front of her three children, okay? So that's how he met her. She was pregnant and they killed her in front of her three children. This is real, this happened in Seattle, all right? And then at the end, the officer had to nurse to cradle the baby, okay? Because the baby was, of one of her children, because the baby was hysterical, okay? So this is the trauma that they had to witness and this lady lost her life for no reason, okay? They tried to say that she was arrested a few weeks before that had happened and she had mental illness. She has a mental illness. She called you guys for help and they killed her, okay? This is real shit, okay? And it's happening right here in Seattle.
Two miles away.
Okay? And there's many, 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 many more stories like this.
I got one more for you.
Two miles away.
So in 2016, Jay Taylor was killed by SPD too.
Alex is right here, there we go.
But here's the difference though. See, there was a jury requesting for that shooting and they found that Mr. Taylor was complying with the police officers, plus because they were in fear of their life. How are you scared of your life if you're fighting for your life? You're doing exactly what your husband is doing. How are you scared? What are you scared of? You're scared because he's a big-eyed blockhead because he's a villain.
So if you're just tuning in, this is our Seattle City Council member from District Four, Alex Peterson, in that light blue shirt. He joined us at the beginning of the march, uh, knowing that we were going to his home and, uh, he decided to come along for the walk, so. He, uh, has a bunch of literature in his back pocket, which calls on the community to call on Alex to meet the community demands, right? Which are, defund Seattle Police Department by at least sixty percent this year and the FY, or excuse me, the, uh, 2021 budget. To invest that money into black and brown communities. To give amnesty to all the protesters. To work with the executive, uh, of King County Dow Constantine to close down the youth jail by next year, not 2025. And to call on Mayor Jenny Durkin to resign. So in short, that's, that's what I believe it says. And we are about a block away, I believe, from Alex Peterson's home. He was nice enough to join us, not nice enough to defund in the budget vote today. So make of that what you will. He's here. He showed up for us in the streets, but he did not show up for us in the council chambers. Uh, so. TBD. Fifty percent at least.
Don't forget, number five.
No, new U.S.
Now, what do we want for number five?
Jenny Durkin to resign.
Not in five years.
Not in five years.
Do it now.
Do it now.
No new U.S.
No new U.S.
Do it now!
Do it now!
Not in five years.
Not in five years.
Do it now.
Do it now!
No new U.S.
No new U.S.
Do it now!
Do it now!
Not in five years.
Not in five years.
Do it now! Do it now.
Do it now.
No, you, you.
No, you, you.
Shut it down.
Shut it down.
Not in five years.
You're welcome.
Black lives matter. Whose life matters?
Black lives matter.
Fifty percent at least. Do you think SPD how much?
Fifty percent at least.
That's all that matters.
Black lives matter.
Whose life matters?
Black lives matter.
Where's the money go?
New Black Community.
Where's the money go?
New Black Community.
Who's all that matters?
Black lives matter.
So Alex is towards the end of the march here, but he's still making his way. Let's see if we can get behind him. There he is. Let's see, does anybody have another question for Alex I could ask?
And do you want to give you time and just pour like a lot of...
No, you, you.
Alex, be mindful of the time that you're coming to make.
Black lives matter. Black lives matter.
Do you know why I did?
It doesn't matter.
Johnny Dark and Judy, guys.
It should. It should.
Johnny Dark and Judy, guys. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. No good cops in a racist system. No bad protesters in a revolution. No good cops in a racist system. No bad protesters in a revolution.
So we are following Alex.
Black lives matter.
And I think we're almost there, I think we're almost there, you guys.
Black lives matter. Every day. Every day. Every day. Every day. Fifty percent at least. Fifty percent at least. Shut it down. Shut it down. Shut it down. Shut it down. Black lives matter. Black lives matter. Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Every day. Kids in cages. Kids in cages. Out of your homes and into the streets. Kids in cages. Kids in cages. Out of your homes and into the streets. Out of your homes and into the streets. Black lives matter. Black lives matter.
So TK offering Alex Peterson some water. She said, "I'm just here to check on you, you doing good?" And then they gave a fist bump. TK is one of the Black Lives Matter Everyday March lead organizers.
What you gonna do? What you gonna do when the D5 you? What you gonna do? What you gonna do when the D5 you? B, I got your B, I got your B. L, I got your L, I got your L. M, I got your M, I got your M.
What's that, Phil?
Black lives matter.
What's that, Phil?
Black lives matter.
Give me a B.
B, I got your B, I got your B.
Give me a L.
L, I got your L, I got your L.
Give me a O.
TK, not on the livestream, not on the livestream. Hey, sorry, sorry.
Whose life matters? Whose life matters? Black lives matter. Whose life matters? Black lives matter.
Oh Brendan, that's a good question.
Black community.
What do we protect?
Black community.
And I said, "What do we invest in?" You say, "Black community." What do we invest in?
Black community.
What do we invest in?
Black community.
Whose life matters?
Black lives matter.
Whose life matters?
Black lives matter.
We're walking out forces, our board right here.
So we got Alex Peterson right here in the blue. Dehydrated, right behind our saxophone player.
Fifty percent at least.
Black lives matter.
Black lives matter.
We got our car brigade out here, holding it down for folks.
We're doing genocide. We're doing genocide. Black lives matter. Black lives matter.
Educate your family.
Educate your family.
Educate your friends.
Educate your friends.
Educate your neighborhood.
Educate your neighborhood.
Educate your family.
Educate your family.
Educate your friends.
Educate your friends.
Educate your neighborhood.
Educate your neighborhood. Black lives matter.
Whose life matters?
Black lives matter.
Yo, the car brigade is lit. Like, it is just absolutely something else tonight. Like, look at all these cars. We have a literal, like, full escort behind us and in front of us. It is wild. And it's so well organized. Like, I'm really impressed with the organization. Got probably at least 15 cars on this side, at least 15 on that. And there's multiple layers as well, just to make sure there's no gaps. We got our legal observers out here in the green hats. They said, they're saying, "When I say Diaz, you say Love." Diaz, Love. Diaz, Love was of course, one of the protesters, one of the livestreamers that was struck by a car on I-5. Severely injured, shout out to Diaz. Hope you're doing well in the hospital. Congratulations on getting in the wheelchair, I saw that post, proud of you.
All our love.
What do we protect?
All our love.
All day?
Every day.
All day?
Every day.
Do we protect family?
Family.
Family?
Family.
Love?
Love.
Love?
Love.
Diaz, you did it, love. You did it, Diaz.
I love Diaz, too. Yeah, we love Diaz, don't get it twisted.
When I say it's a summer of, you say love. It's a summer of?
Love.
It's a summer of?
Love.
It's a summer of?
Love.
It's a summer of?
Love.
It's a summer of?
Love.
It's a summer of?
Love.
It's a summer of?
Love.
It's a summer of?
Love. Black lives matter. Black lives matter.
For those of you in the comments saying the protests aren't effective, I mean, these people have literally been engaging with every single one of their elected officials. Right? Whether that's via email, via phone, via their virtual city council meetings, whether that be in the streets, whether that be in the political arena, whether that be in the litigation. I know a lot of these folks have jumped onto different lawsuits, myself included. So, we are attacking this from a multi-pronged approach, because that's what it's gonna take, a diversity of tactics here. Felipe, confirming receipt of that text, thank you. Any updates?
Black lives matter.
Black lives matter.
This is what we need.
We want community.
This is what we need.
Tomorrow, tomorrow at 10 a.m., there is gonna be a press conference at City Hall with Gonzalez, Turbo, and... One other person.
Strauss?
Who is it?
I don't know, I'm asking. Okay, Lewis?
But, there's gonna be a press conference at City Hall at 10 a.m. So we need to show up there. The reason for this press conference is because they are going to try and explain why they're not defunding SPD by 50%. So we are gonna be there, and we are gonna tell them that you need to fucking defund SPD by 50%. If you want signs, a ticket for change can help you get those signs. Also, we have signs in our car, but everyone should show up because we need to apply that pressure. And we don't want them to think that we are going to accept this excuse and that we are gonna be compromised.
3.1 million ain't enough for me.
It's not.
3.1 million is not enough. That is the total of what they defunded today.
Is 3.1 million enough?
Hell no.
Is 3.1 million enough?
No.
Is 85 million what we're asking for?
Yes.
Is 85 million what we're asking for?
Yes.
I'm gonna be real with y'all, I'm gonna be real with y'all. 500K from 13 commanding officer salaries is not enough. 500K is half a mil is not enough. If they make more than, if we still combine them together, they still make more than a million dollars all together, so... Half a mil is not enough to be taken from this. A little more. Maybe like a...
A lot of, a lot of work.
Like a mil and a half or something like that, so I'm trying to make a couple mil if we combine them all. Enough to answer. 500K is not enough. Not enough.
These council members are wishy-washy, guys. Remember how I said the other day, every time after a conversation with them, I just complained like they're playing with us, and that's exactly what they're doing because they told us 41%, 42% is what they could get for sure. And now they're presenting us with 3.1 million? That's not even close. They are wishy-washy. We need to hold our top council members accountable for things that they say. You can't just say something, how are you so bold to say something on livestream, on video, and then turn around and do something else? And then you wanna have a press conference to try and explain it? That's bullshit.
Fuck that. They talking like 150 mil for next year just off a quick map. Listen, that's not enough.
So Alex is coming over, it looks like. Maybe not.
Get the numbers, and let's get the...
Need all that, need all that money.
41%? 41%?
Alex is standing right there to the left, in the blue shirt.
Yes, you guys, 100 officers with this 3.1 million dollars? Let's be real, there's like 45, 600 more that should go to. Like, that serious. Because I can guarantee there's about that much, that many or more that have multiple criminal complaints against them that they should be in jail for. I can guarantee, I can almost guarantee it. I can guarantee it. Yeah, we can, we can, you know.
We're not going nowhere, Alex.
No, we ain't going nowhere.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So Alex is...
Hey, before we move real quick, I just wanna say something. So the ticket for change event is gonna be that 10 a.m. press conference at City Hall tomorrow. Tomorrow afternoon, I will be hosting another arts and crafts event. So I'm gonna have a ton of signage, bring your art supplies. You're gonna be making banner signs, I have a bunch of stuff. It's looking about 2:30, 3:00 p.m. And so if you don't already follow that phase, it's gonna be ticket number four, change period Seattle, and we're gonna make a ton of signage for people, bring everyone. Bring your neighbors, bring your friends, bring your whole fish. See you tomorrow.
Yeah, can we take a picture with you with it?
Yeah, do that for our Instagram.
Okay, wait, but then let's all get in the picture.
Yeah, let's get a group picture. So we got Alex Peterson giving the Everyday Marchers a literal seat at the table. Alright, you guys, you know what to do. Circle up. Come on, you guys, come on. On the other side, come on, make it like a group. Yeah, there we go. And can someone get a screenshot for me? Can someone please get a screenshot?
Okay, that's enough, that's enough.
Wait, you gotta sign in the seats now.
No, this is our seats.
This is our seats, this is...
We already have this chair.
We got our seats. This is our seat at the table.
I'm gonna run into the video a little bit, okay? If everybody missed it, Alex Peterson just gave us this chair.
It's a seat at the table, it says EDL seat at the table.
Yeah. Who got our seat?
We got our seat.
Who got our seat? We got our seat. Who got our seat? We got our seat.
Here it is.
Yeah, especially if you're an artist, I definitely need you out there tomorrow if you wanna make all of our signs pop. I mean, some of these, what I'm looking at right now, were made at our event on Monday. Like this one, the shut it down one, that's from Monday. That one over there is from Monday too. Um, there's only about 20 of us, and we only put in about two hours and a half. And we turned out hundreds of signs. A lot of these signs...
Can someone please post, if you took a screenshot of that, can someone please post that on my wall?
So, literally, I have all the materials. Markers, paints, spray paints.
I'd really appreciate it.
Cardboard, poster board.
Thank you.
All you wanna do is show up. We need all of you, we need all of you.
I can't post it on my own right now, but I would love for it to be seen on my Facebook wall for other people. So if you could, if you're a friend of mine, if you could just post it on there, that'd be amazing. Thank you. Let me know if it works. You know, no, 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 your phone.
Cause right now, this phone, it's on for only one hour at a time and then it shuts off.
For the livestream? Or just in general? Oh shit.
So once I get home, then I'll switch over here.
Just, just let me know if it doesn't work, okay?
Alex Peterson, are you comfortable with getting down or do you wanna fall with us?
We like, we get comfortable, we literally get comfortable.
It's much better. We've been marching.
Well, you want to do it in the grass? Sure!
You guys wanna go on the grass?
Oh my gosh, please, this is... We all do our part, man. Could someone get a screenshot of that for me as well, please? I would love a screenshot of that. Thank you.
So, there's been a lot going around today. A lot of emotions about 2.6 million and then going up to 3.1 million and that not being 50%, and the whole city council voting no besides Sean, 285. That was going around today, we found that out while we were marching. Do you wanna kind of explain that to everybody of what's going on?
Sure. But first, thank you for letting me walk with you, to march with you tonight. I mean, this is a black-led protest, it was peaceful and it happens every day, right?
Every day.
So, so thank you for letting me, thank you for letting me march with you in the neighborhood. So, today's vote, there were, there were lots of amendments to the budget committee stuff that we're working on and...
Can you on the back hear him?
Oh, sorry. I'll talk louder. No, no, that's okay, I, I, thank you though.
Thank you.
How about we just bring it in closer? Booty cheeks! Scoot it closer, let's get tight, guys.
But give Alex that least 6 feet, we can be in a circle or around Alex, but give him at least 6 feet.
There's seats right here.
No, 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 no.
Thanks for marching, thanks for letting me march with you tonight and, you know, this is a black-led march. I don't, I appreciate you giving me some time to answer questions and explain what was going on today at City Council and then what's gonna happen on Monday, and then you have a meeting tomorrow maybe? Okay, good. So, so today, what we're trying to do is, and a lot of you know this already, so we're working with the budget that we're currently in right now for this year. There's a budget deficit this year. There's an opportunity to reallocate funds from the Seattle Police Department to other places this year. And then also in six, seven weeks, we're gonna have our big budget process for 2021, 2022. And what happened today was there were several amendments to various bills for this year's budget. And there was some money reallocated from SPD to other places, to other city departments, to money that's being set aside for community groups. And one of the most important things is the participatory budget process that's gonna happen. And that's where I brought out, you know, your seat to the table because that's where you wanna have a seat at the table so that you're, you're in there for when the bigger dollars are gonna be reallocated. And where is that money gonna go? Into black communities, but you need to be there to provide the details and keep pushing for the bigger dollars for the, for the fall budget process. Probably not telling you anything you haven't heard from, you know, the president of the city council, Lorena Gonzalez, the budget chair Theresa Moscada, the public safety chair Lisa Herbold. I, I think, I saw some of the videos from there and it's the same thing where they wanted to do a lot more this year. They ran into the hurdles of the labor contracts and the consent decree, the federal judge tells us we have to have a certain number of sergeants, and this is the old, older reform stuff which is still in place and has to be adhered to. And then the labor contracts. Now that labor contract is expiring this year. This is a, this is a real opportunity to... That's right, December 31st. Yeah, so that, that labor contract is a source of many problems. The inability to discipline officers, excessive pay, et cetera. Now, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bad talk, you know, all police officers, like there are a lot that do good work, so... And, and so... You, you were saying, you were saying something that really resonated, which is they're in a racist system. So it, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't matter if you're doing good work if you're in an institutionally racist system and that's what we're trying to disrupt and break up and deal with here. So I just wanna acknowledge that. So, in terms of what, what you can do tomorrow, what you can do Monday is, is keep marching, keep pushing. You know, the fact that you're having a meeting with the, these powerful council members who are chairs of the important committees, keep, keep, keep the focus on, on those. Council president, budget chair, safety committee. Yes.
So my question was, if you're going to a meeting in the meeting in Seattle, why is it only 3.1 million and not 85 million? I, I want that to be explained. And I understand the labor laws and you guys have been saying that for the last few weeks, but from my understanding, from talking to multiple city council members out here on marches and having Zoom conferences with them, we were getting close to 41%, and that was the so-called promise and that they were gonna push harder to get to 50%.
But 41%?
And some were saying 42, that was the promise. So I want to understand, I was there today. I'm asking you to explain to all of us
Sure.
why is it only 3.1?
Sure. So, as I understand, the money that was, there was more than 3 million allocated toward participatory budgeting to black-led community groups. There was 10 million, then another 4 million, then the 3 million. That, that was coming from other funds, not all from SPD. What was coming from SPD was this, was a smaller amount, which is what these other council members are saying. It's a down payment toward the bigger budget discussion that we're gonna have in the fall. And I think that that's, that 41% I thought was a list of things that the budget chair, council member Moscada had provided, some line items, she had shown it on a screen last Friday, like, hey, there's some, here are some budget line items where we'd like to go after in the fall budget process.
41% was for next year.
That's what I thought.
Where did those other funds come out of? Like where did those other funds get cut from? If they didn't get cut from the police department, where'd they get transferred?
There was, so the, the 10 million to, that's gonna go, that's a down payment toward community groups, the 3 million for participatory budgeting, that's coming from funds throughout the city government that just had...
Give us some examples.
Yeah, some like...
Like a reserve, a reserve fund, for example.
I know the rainy day fund and the general fund all together only had about 13 million.
And they said they couldn't pull any more than that because it's needed, it's needed, yeah.
So where did that, where did that 10 million, that 3 million, that 4 million, where did those funds specifically come from?
Those came from another fund where there was just money identified from, or we're gonna borrow from another fund. It was just, it's really squeezing money from this deficit plague.
But we really need to know which funds they came from. The reason why is because we don't want anything taken from transit funds. We don't want anything taken from school funds, that's where it's supposed to go to. So we need specifics, we need to know exactly where that money came from.
Let me, let me, let me get back to you on that, on the exact source.
So, pretty much what you're saying is that that when you're discussing it with us and you're saying, um, you're preparing for the fall budget meeting and the budget preparation for fall, that's for 2021?
That's right.
Correct.
That's right.
So as of for 2020, you will not be defunding SPD by 50%?
That, that is not, that is not happening, no, it's not. I mean, I, I've been straight with you from the beginning, I, I, that's why I was worried about the 50% numbers. I wasn't sure exactly, I thought they would run into the labor law, the consent decree, these other things. And so that's why I was nervous about pledging something myself.
But you were there with us like two, three days ago with three, with two other council members and you didn't bring this to our...
What happened to 17 million?
Yeah.
What happened to that number?
You were there on that Zoom call and you didn't say any of that.
I, I didn't say that we wouldn't achieve 50% in the 2020.
You didn't clarify that that was for 2021's, but...
Well, that, well, that, that's, that's my bad if I didn't clarify that, I'm...
You guys also talked about the 17 million. It's like really getting hard to trust you guys. What happened to the 17 million number? It's like all these things keep changing, the twisting of words. It's like when you go to a doctor's office and they use big words and then you get a really big bill, that's sort of what's...
That 17 million is happening. That 17 million is happening. That's the, the 10 and the 3 and the 4, that is happening.
So you're saying total amount of money that was gained by this budget process was 17 million dollars, but only 3.1 million of it came from SPD?
That's my understanding, yeah.
So, all together, so where the, I still wanna know where the rest of it is.
What was SPD's remainder budget for the rest of this year? For the rest of 2020, what did they have left?
But there, but they have identified 100 officers, 100 positions that would be eliminated.
There ain't gonna be none of these cops out here on the streets, there's gonna be parking enforcement, the navigation team, we heard about the navigation team. There's some horses, horses are considered officers, in case nobody noticed. They do get bad, just then they are considered officers.
The same with dogs.
So you could be saying 50 of them officers are horses, come on, man. Like dead serious.
No, for real.
No, dead ass.
They used loopholes before, don't think it's impossible.
Dogs are, dogs are considered officers. Dogs are considered officers, horses are considered officers, so you guys getting rid of the horses too could be part of the 100 officers you guys are getting rid of.
No, so my question was not answered. My question wasn't answered. I want to know, what was SPD's remainder funds for 2020? If 3.1 million was taken for them, from them to be reallocated into black communities? And what did they really have left in total for the rest of this year?
At this point, you guys should know.
Should know that number.
And, and what? What impact, if any, did the overpolicing of protesters during the last protest season have on our ability to reduce some of that budget back, right?
I want to know, like I said. I want to know the number, is what I'm asking you. I know how much they spent.
During...
Out of the 400 million dollar budget for this year, how much is like available, like left?
How much did they have left, yeah?
Yeah, it's under 100 million, I think.
Whoa, why was only 3.1 million defunded from them when specifically 50% was supposed to be defunded from SPD?
So even if you can't get to that so-called 85 million and, and you know, you could possibly be like, okay, well, it was 50%, but it was of what they had left, that's still not add up to 50% of what they had left.
I, I think that's, that's a key question that they need to explain tomorrow.
But you are the part of them.
I'm sorry, I wasn't the one promising to, to defund by 50%.
I'm sorry, but can I ask you why exactly you guys are saying that defunding will be possible in 2021? When if you were to defund SPD right now, right now, when we need it, when black communities need it, healthcare, education, basic human rights? Why don't you guys do it now when all of the money of SPD budget is going to pay salaries for those racist cops? Why?
It's because the labor contract does not allow it.
So were you on the council when those labor contracts were approved?
I was not.
And you keep saying you didn't promise that, but you gotta understand, you're only sticking up for yourself. You are a part of those council members whether you wanna accept it or not. If you do something, it goes on them. If they do something, it's gonna go on you. All you guys sitting here lying and promising you're gonna do this and promising you're gonna do that is not cool. In a way, you did promise that the police were gonna get defunded by 50% along with the rest of the council members.
Well, Alex Peterson...
Alex Peterson is, is one of...
I don't know if everyone is aware here, but Alex Peterson and Deborah Morris did not vote yes or promise us that, but Alex Peterson is here right now and he, and he is in all of those meetings. Therefore, he should have the answers unless he's sleeping through those meetings and not paying attention. So that's why we're able to ask Alex Peterson these questions, because you were there. You know.
I, I, I've given you the, the dollar amount, but it's the labor contract that prevents it from being immediately realized.
Somebody in the back gave us the dollar amount. 86 million, that's still, that's 400, that's 40 million.
Okay, so I'm just thinking about these numbers here. So you've said that it is less than 100 million is what was left for the rest of 2020 for SPD's budget, correct?
That's my understanding.
Less than 100 million, but it is still in the tens of millions, correct?
Right.
So how much of that is actually going towards the labor contracts that you were talking about?
85%.
85% of... Like 80 something million is going towards labor contracts?
Yeah, yeah, it's covered by the labor contract.
Towards the payment of these racist officers.
Do you see the problem with that at all?
Yeah, I, I, that's why the contract needs to be fixed. The contract is the problem.
Yeah, so what do you plan to do about the contract?
Actually, what do you have to do?
Yeah, let's talk about, let's talk about...
And also, I just wanna make it so clear that I am very upset that we didn't start, we didn't start hearing about this whole contract thing, this labor contract thing until recently. We've been asking about the police budget for so, so, so long. We've been asking about how much money they have left and how we can get 50% of that to be reallocated into black communities. And not until the past two weeks have we heard about a fucking labor contract. That information was never disclosed to us and that makes me very upset, but go ahead and explain.
It's not same things though, because you have kept doing those things of like, oh, we gotta make that vote by August 1st, but didn't tell us. Or when we were having meetings, all of you guys kept saying yes, but no one told us that we could only have three of you in a meeting at the same time. It's like you guys...
Four.
Four at the same time. And it's like you keep trying to, are you trying to make our, us as black youth, as black 20-year-olds fall on our face? Like it truly looks like you keep trying to play us as...
Loop the goalpost.
And that's not okay, like our organizers are pissed, they're walking out.
I, I hear you, I...
Do you?
I, I did not, yeah.
Okay, so how do you plan to affect the, 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 the labor contracts from now on? So how do we plan to reverse it so we can get the full 50%?
Yes.
I really want, I really want 60 next year now because you guys played us this year.
And please, any loopholes that you can think of that...
Please let us know now.
Please let us know right now, we need the information right now, cause that is where my anger is coming from, is the lack of information that's been provided to us when we've been asking questions for so long. We were just given bits and pieces, but not the whole picture. And that's why we're sitting here lost, like what happened? Because y'all never told us the full truth, which is lying. Not telling the full truth is lying.
I'm glad that we're talking now, I'm glad that, I'm, you know, I'm glad that I did not overpromise these things and I want to tell you what is gonna happen with these labor contracts so that you can get into those details and, and keep the pressure on very strategically. So this labor contract with the Seattle Police Officers Guild expires December 31st, like, like TK said. There is an, or, there is a group called the Labor Relations...
Can you speak up for the people in the back?
There, there's a Labor Relations Policy Council and it's made up of people from the mayor's office and five city council members.
Are you one of those council members?
I, I am not on the Labor Relations Policy Committee, but when the contract pops out, then we vote on it. All nine of us vote on it. But those five council members on the Labor Relations Policy Council and the executive branch folks are, are management. And they are negotiating against and with the Police Officers Guild for, for that contract. And so, the, you, you may have read about, the last one that was, that was put in place was last year. And it had been, they had been out of contract for a couple years. They worked on trying to get some additional reforms in place. The police officers wanted more money in exchange for that. It had to be something approved by the federal judge, Judge Robart, cause we're under a federal consent decree. That, that was, that labor contract was approved, it did not fix everything. The disciplinary process is, is still a mess. And so, it was a contract approved retroactively, a three-year contract, but it's coming up for renewal. And this is the, this is the key opportunity here, is to make sure that the, the city council members on the Labor Relations Policy Council and the executive branch folks from the mayor's office are negotiating very hard with the Police Officers Guild to deal with the disciplinary process so that, that cops who have done bad things can be disciplined properly or fired and not be able to appeal it or create this complicated process where they get reinstated. And also to get rid of the excessive pay, the overtime that we have. That money should be going into black communities, that money should not be overpaying police officers.
So why don't we do it then? Because we, you have a chance to do that right now.
This, right, this is...
Well, with the contracts that are coming up in December, they do.
This is the key, yes.
But I'm sorry, all I hear are excuses, excuses, excuses. With the contract, with the saying that the plan's being rushed. If you really wanted to defund SPD, you could. There's no need to be, there's no need to be negotiating with the Police Officers Guild. There's no need for police officers to decide when they're gonna get defunded or when the money is gonna be allocated. There's no, there shouldn't be any need for that. It should be the city council members voting for defunding the SPD. This is why SPD is not being held accountable, because they hold themselves accountable. But unfortunately with Spog, because council members, like your predecessor, voted for things to make it so if the police were defunded or they were forcibly fired or anything like that, that we have to pay them for their time and things like that, that dug us in this hole, correct?
Yes, and there are, there are labor laws, there are labor contracts that supersede what city councils do. That's why the labor contract is so important.
They're gonna say you guys, you're like, well, the city council didn't have the right, didn't, didn't have the legal right to do this to us and blah, 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 which is a lawsuit, blah, 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 we'll lose, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, we know, we've heard, we've heard, we've literally heard all that. Who are the five council members that are on that?
Sure, the LRPC, it's council member Gonzalez, Moscada.
We're writing these down.
You guys got it?
Yeah, I got, hold on.
Luis, and I'll say them again, so, so Gonzalez. And by the way, you have excellent council members on the Labor Relations Council that will, are able to...
What's the fifth one? So I got Gonzalez, Herb, Moscada, Luis.
Okay, but you also have to... Okay, but you also have to understand that you guys aren't telling us the whole truth. Like when the organizers come here to talk to you guys, you're not telling them the whole truth. You not telling us the whole truth is you guys thinking that we're literally dumb. You, you guys are thinking that, oh, if we don't tell them the whole truth, they'll stop protesting. That's not how it's gonna work. We're not gonna stop protesting until everything gets needed. This isn't for the adults, this is for kids' future, this is for my future. They're not gonna stop until it gets, until it happens. So all you guys sitting here lying and not telling the whole truth isn't gonna help and you're not understanding that.
And also, just an FYI, something that stood right with me, the fact that there are city council members who are with Police Officer Guild and there is this contract with them to begin with because they're so blatantly in your face about how racist they are and even Mike Soling, the president of Police Officer Guild, talks about how we should be using tear gas for crowd control and all this. And that's the same reason why SPD spent 6.4 million dollars just tear gassing us. Do you understand that?
I do, and that's why I supported the Savant's Law to, to ban tear gas, to ban chokeholds, you know, boot that as a city council, something that we did.
But that lasted one day.
It, it, it didn't go into effect for several days and that's why, and then there was a protest and they did it again, you're right. It 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 didn't go into effect for several days, and that's why, and and then there was a protest and they did it again, you're right.
How many of you guys have been tear gassed?
Yeah, that's a snack.
And it was spicy as fuck.
How many of you guys heard that the CDC that said tear gassing was not only banned because of war in the Geneva Conference, but on top of that, with coronavirus going on, that was going to kill some people.
It has killed people.
And it affects, and it affects women's reproductive systems as well. So you're trying to stop us from having a future for our children.
That happened in Portland.
That's why we passed a law to ban it.
Did you?
Only lasted for less than twenty-four hours before people started getting sprayed again.
Because of loopholes, because of political loopholes. And it's like.
The same loophole.
The same loopholes you guys are you are able to go through around us is what we feel like. We, why aren't you guys aware of that when you do pass a bill and a law to ban the use of those chemical weapons? Why weren't you able to think about those loopholes that they could use to continue to use it? Cuz what are they doing now? Instead of going through the city, they're going through federal laws in order to be able to do it, isn't that correct? And didn't.
Yeah, cuz Robart put a T R O in it because of the decree they're undo. And they said it was legal for them to use that shit. So now it doesn't go, it's it was supposed to go into effect at the end of the month, but the T R O is still in place. So legally, SPD can still tear gas the hell out of all of us right sitting here right now for no goddamn reason, just because they can.
The reason of passing the law, I'm really curious.
So the the law take takes a while to take effect. And then there was an incident where they used it before it had taken effect. And then there was a judge, there were two judges involved. And um it was put on hold until they could get the input from the the other organizations, the accountability organizations.
Okay, so as a council member.
We weren't happy about that. We we thought the judge was wrong by of doing that.
So as a council member that sits here right now on this, on this council, moving forward, since, because we know we're not getting fifty percent this year, which is disheartening and very upsetting, but moving forward, are you prepared to step up and support defunding SPD by fifty percent next year? Personally, you as a council member, right here, right now. See, because.
I I wanna, I pledge to move tens of million dollars out of SPD into black communities. I I'm not.
That's what happened this time.
Prepared to agree to a specific number because I don't, you know, again, the I don't wanna be one of those counselors that said something and then didn't deliver. That's why we need to ha- deal with the labor contract first.
If you guys are already, if you guys are already promising forty-one percent for next year, which is, if you do quick math, according to some people doing quick math, it's about a hundred and fifty million dollars. Which there's pretty sure there's some categories that I have numbers that aren't disclosed, Jared, that you guys will get eventually in the next few weeks here. Which I'm sure you'll be more than happy to share with us.
Yeah, yeah, let's.
Gladly.
Let's.
And then so, I'm sure that number will go up and climb higher to about fifty percent, so if you're already committed to forty-one percent, was nine more percent to commit to.
Well, I I that's why we're gonna have the budget process to to go through this. And that's why you're gonna keep, that's why you need to seat at the table to determine and and to determine where that money goes.
So when, so when we do, so when we do get to fifty percent for next year, cuz we're gonna get there for sure. Are you gonna step up and support the majority of council members that stepped up this time and decided to defund by fifty percent? Cuz if everybody's backing it and everybody's on board.
Once we've gone through that whole process.
Somebody has to, you gotta be the one to step up and be like, you know what, I'm with you guys too. You can't fight this the whole way. This is literally the time you have to pick a side. If you're saying black lives matter and we get a seat at the table, prove it. And say you have to defund SPD by fifty percent. Prove it. Cuz just saying it don't mean nothing. Politicians been telling us our lives matter our whole entire lives. The police act like our lives matter our whole entire lives. But we see they killing us. These politicians ain't doing nothing to stop it. So right here, right now, as a council member, I'm asking you to pick a side and prove to me that my life matters.
But that's why I don't, that's why I don't wanna give you empty words tonight, because I don't wanna be in a position later when when that contract pops out of the LRPC and and they're not, they're not getting.
You're not gonna be the only one to take the heat. You ain't gonna be the only one.
Overpromised you.
You're not even the only one taking the heat right now, cuz everybody else is finna get some heat too.
Salant, I mean, she's not perfect. She's messed up along the road. But she has always spoken up for black lives when it comes to percentages, when it comes to what she is fighting for. Why are you scared of like not trying to do that?
I I think that what she was saying was impractical because of the labor contract issue.
But when we also look at twenty twenty-one as well, because that's coming up soon.
Next six weeks.
You be like, okay, come on, council members, we're all gonna do this fifty percent. Like, this is needed.
Or even, okay, so I am understanding what Alex is saying. Alex is saying that he does not want to say he's committed to giving us fifty percent if he doesn't believe that we can actually get fifty percent. But what I want to know, and I think what TK was asking, is once we do do go through that process and we're able to look at the numbers and determine what can actually legally be defunded from SPD, will you step up to be part of that support to defund SPD? Without percentages, I'm not saying percentages right now, but I need to know where you're going to be standing when we get to that point.
Yes.
That doesn't mean jump on board with other council members bills. No, you present your own and you stand up on your own ten feet and your own ten toes. It's what we're asking you to do.
I feel like I did that today. I don't know if you saw what I said today at at city council, but um and then we're gonna go through this process in the fall. We need to get the best labor contract. And so we're not just overpromising, but we're actually delivering the dollars.
You're still not answering the question that Nicole asked you, what, like, where will you stand when it gets to that?
He said he will stand with us. He said he will stand with defunding SPD. And we're gonna hold you to that. We're definitely gonna hold you to that.
We are big on accountability, in case you have not noticed. We are pretty big on accountability.
Again, thank you for letting me march with you tonight, and I know that we'll be talking again. I'll be talking to the leaders here again. And um.
We are not leaders, we are regular schmigler people.
Organizers, body demand.
I also have something to ask, because as I'm all sure, we are all aware of us protesting or attempting to protest at Chief Best's house. You have not spoken out about.
That incident.
That incident.
Or her letter released to council members.
So what were your thoughts on that?
Because you see us having a conversation with you. You marched with us, you see what we're doing. What are your thoughts?
Tonight, I mean.
This is every night.
Yeah, well, it's peace, it's peaceful. I I don't, yeah, it's peaceful.
So did you respond to Chief Best's letter?
I did not respond to the letter. Well, I didn't have all, I didn't have all the information.
Will you respond now?
Cuz I know that she's asking.
You want me to say?
I know that she's asking you guys.
You know, if they did what I saw, I like I marched with them tonight, if they did that same.
Also seen our livestreams though, cuz you referred to that earlier.
I I have seen you sitting, I've seen you sitting down with other council members.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So you seen what we what we do, how we operate on multiple occasions, so what is your response to Chief Best's letter? Do you agree with it?
So I'm I'm happy to respond or that I that I marched with you tonight. It was peaceful and that, you know, I've talked to the, I've talked to the to the leaders uh multiple times and.
But.
Do you agree with that letter?
So, yeah, in my.
There, so I wasn't there.
Okay.
We were up in Snohomish County.
Yeah, we were up in Snohomish County. I mean, I can walk you through it pretty quickly, what happened when we were there. So we went to Snohomish County to, with the plan, to march to Chief Best's house in the same way that we have marched to your house. The exact same way we did it. We made out a location and we marched and we get there. We tried to get the attention of the the council member or the politician or the person in power. And we hopefully get them out of their home to have a conversation just like this. So we drove up to Snohomish. We reached this neighborhood that was Chief Best's neighborhood. And instantly, there was neighbors coming out of their houses, driving around and asking us, what are you guys doing? Where are you going? Things like that. And they were just pretty much interrogating us. And once that started to happen, there was a blue truck that came with a man and his two teenage sons asking the same questions over and over, what are you guys doing, dah 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 dah. So at this point, I decided that we should move out of that area. We all thought that it was smartest to, the, it was about the decision to move out of there and go and relocate somewhere else to congregate and then start marching. So we moved to this gravel area that was near the neighborhood. Once we get there, um we talked, we get back in the cars, we drive back to the neighborhood, and there was the same blue truck blocking the road leading to Chief Best's house, which is a dead end. There's one way in and one way out. So the same man that I had seen earlier, some of our protesters, we got out of the cars, we were in cars this whole time, but some of our security team and the organizers got out of the cars to go see what's going on. Immediately as they walked past the blue truck, they were met with rifles in their faces. Pointed at their faces, not just to the side, as in, I have a weapon, which is still a very dumb intimidation move to have. But they were pointing rifles in their faces, and they also had pistols as well. When this started to happen, people starts walking back. Nobody was stepping, going on anyone's property. We are very big on speaking about that. Nobody went on anyone's property. Nobody threatened any of the neighbors in any way. As speaking to this man who owns the blue truck, continued to refuse to move his truck that was blocking a public street. We tried to help this man understand, you are refusing to give us our First Amendment right to protest right now. This is a Black Lives Matter protest, and for you to stop us from doing this, you are being anti-black. This man and his wife were refusing to acknowledge that they were being anti-black and that they were refusing to give us our right in that moment. Unfortunately, they also had sons, as I mentioned earlier. They knew where we were coming to because they had our, their sons scope scope us out and go back and tell them what, where we were at, which is very unfortunate. Then, next thing you know, more neighbors' vehicles start showing up and blocking other parts of that road even more, so we can't get past it. Asking over and over, can you move your truck? Can you move your truck? No. So at this point, there's more neighbors showing up. It is not safe for us here. They're meeting us with weapons. We need to go. So we decided to leave this location. As we're leaving, this other man comes up and waves a full clip in our faces, puts it back in his pocket and walks away. That is what happened in Snohomish County. Regardless of what you see or hear, that is what happened. In Chief Best's letter, we are the aggressors. We are the ones terrorizing these neighbors.
She said it was late at night, but you can see in all of the videos.
It was daytime.
She said that there was only white people there. Your organizers are not white.
And if you would like proof of the neighbors with guns, here it is.
I believe, yeah.
We have video proof of everything.
That we were all wearing Black Lives Matter stuff and had these huge scary masks on and.
Wearing all black and wearing black masks and everything.
She was wearing a sundress.
I was wearing little dress. I looked very cute, but I was not wearing all black. I know that. I was not wearing no, so e- even if we are wearing all black, what the hell is wrong with that? What the hell is wrong with that, even if we are? How, why does that automatically mean that we are aggressive? Why are we met with guns in our faces? And then that is the letter that comes out. Which that letter was encouraging those neighbors. Chief Best was rewarding and awarding these neighbors for the reaction that they gave us, which is so disappointing.
He basically encouraged vigilantes to come attack us. He basically told them, it's okay. The chief of police literally just told these vigilantes that it is okay to come over here and attack us.
And that is actually true, because the very next day, the organizers of this group were receiving threats of people spreading our home addresses if people wanna send arrangements. We have had to take so much precaution in these past twenty-four hours for our safety, for our lives. Because of what happened in Snohomish County, none of us can go home. None of us have been home. We can't be home. We have to stay at a safe location because of what happened there and the fact that Chief Best went and clapped for them, like, oh, they saved the day.
She literally said.
She called it successful.
Yeah, on the news, she said it was successful. The neighbors did what needed to be done, and it was a good job.
Guns in our faces, Alex, and we're the aggressors.
Are we aggressive? Are we being aggressive towards you?
No.
Have we attacked you?
No.
I'm pretty sure we made sure you stayed hydrated. We made sure you were safe. You you're here in one piece, literally.
We walked you home.
We literally walked you home. We made, this is the safest escort you will ever get home.
We walked you home.
This is literally the safest barricade you will ever get home, literally.
Tammy Morales, Tammy Morales has been the only. Only council member who has spoke up against that, and I'm asking you to do the same. When we go back to Chief Best's house, which we will, and we will be going more for the bigger march than we've ever had. Please, her council member has also said she will be marching with us. What about you?
I thank you for sharing that with me. That sounds terrifying.
Just imagine how you feel every day being black.
And I'm sorry that happened. And I will personally talk to Chief Best about it.
And please mention to Chief Best.
Come talk to us.
Yeah, I mean, that that's.
Cuz that was the point.
There isn't enough talking going on.
That was the point of going to her house, was to talk.
We will need you to make a statement and make sure that everybody sees it, because Tammy Morales can't, she's a wonderful council member. But she cannot be the only one making statements, because it is only her voice saying that it is not okay to kill us.
And I might add, Tammy Morales did not need a whole full breakdown of the story of what happened in order to put out a statement to say that what Chief Best said was unacceptable. She just read that shit right away. She was like, what? No. I didn't need to call her and tell her, so listen, Tammy. So we got there, listen, this way. No, I didn't have to do none of that. Automatically, she knew, there is no reason why protesters should be met with guns. And the chief of police, who's supposed to be prota- protecting the very people from those communities is awarding the people and rewarding them for being aggressive. They were aggressive. They were disrespectful. They were taunting us and threatening us and still are threatening us to this day. And you need to mention that too, that after she put out that statement, we started to receive threats to our homes and our families. That is not okay.
It's crazy. This is so funny because you can take away the fact that we were there, but you literally performed an illegal action by blocking a public road. Fire EMS couldn't get down that road if there was a fire. A neighbor came up to us and literally told us there was a fire a couple of days ago. And that's why she was concerned about her neighbor's truck being in the road. And when she even walked over, a white woman walked over to ask her neighbor to move his truck, he still refused. That is anti-black and that is a problem, because not only did you literally commit a crime, you literally committed another crime by literally telling us we cannot exercise our first constitutional right. Literally, that is our First Amendment right in the US Constitution, is freedom of speech, freedom to protest on public property. That is a public street, which is public property, and he should have never done that. So we're just confused on how
And.
Uh the chief, first of all, why does the chief of police even live out there if she's the chief of police in Seattle? First of all. First of all. And what what has she done for the black community that put her in that office in the first place? Let's be real. Because let's let's all be correct here. They were gonna choose some Mexican dude or some white dude that wasn't even from Washington to fill that position. But the black community in Seattle stood up for her to be in that position. So everybody keeps talking about how they should respect her trauma as a black woman. Really, what about ours? The neighbors are causing us, literally.
What about our trauma by your neighbors and your officers who are under your command? That too.
Man, that's what the problem is.
Not just that.
Like, seriously.
And another point that I wanna make, cuz I know someone's gonna try to say it, someone will try to make the excuse, well, you guys block roads too. This is for our safety. We use these cars for our safety. We have lost people due to cars. And whenever we get a car that pulls up to us and they are seeming aggressive, they're just like, get out of my way. I'm trying to go, I'm trying to go. We move. We move. Whenever we see an ambulance or a fire truck coming, we move out of the way. So before they even try to make that argument, I wanna make that so clear right now that it is not the same. It is not the same. And those people refuse to just admit that they wanted to stop a Black Lives Matter protest. They literally said any, they they refuse to admit to that. And it is unfortunate that they are raising two sons who looked like they were in their teenage years. And that means those two sons being raised in that household with that mentality, they're taking that mentality to school where I know there's black kids in those schools too and other colored kids in those schools. So the opinion of these kids matters too. The way you're teaching your kids to live, the way you're teaching your kids to grow up matters. Cuz those kids went back in that house thinking that their parents did something good, and that is not okay. That is not okay. That is putting the black kids that go to school with them and that are around them in danger.
They're literally creating school shootings, bad ass by doing that. They literally are creating the next serial killer.
Those are the real bullies there. That was real bullying.
If you look, if you look at American history, majority of the mass shooters, the the serial killers are white men. Literally, name one black serial killer. I'm sure if you if you go, if you go back in history a long time, you'll find one maybe, or two. But the majority of these serial killers are white.
And honestly, they do live in Washington. We have more serial killers here than any other state.
And it's because how these parents are raising their children. It starts in the schools and it starts at home. And it starts, literally racism is taught, it's not learned. It is literally taught. It's not, it's not something. Okay, it's learned, but it's not something that you're born with, with. You're not born to be racist.
It's not inherited.
That's what I was looking for. But you literally are taught and you learn how to be racist from the people around you, from your surrounding situations and your surrounding areas. And as a council member, reading that letter should have instantly pissed you off because I'm sure you have children. I'm sure you have grandchildren. You're not raising them like that, are you?
I hope I don't have grandchildren.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Oh shit, I hope not. Well, listen, she's too young. Please don't have no grandchildren just yet. I'm praying you don't. I, I hope you don't. I'm not wishing that on you. But I'm sure you got kids and you're not raising your kids like that. You're not raising your kids to be racist and to not see color, are you?
I hope not.
I hope not. Okay then. So why should it be okay for the chief of Seattle Police Department to okay racism? And for you to see that, you should have been instantly like, fuck no, these are, what the hell? Let me take a stand because regardless of anything, protesters should not be met with guns. We literally are, I'm sitting here in a white t-shirt and some shorts, comfy as hell with these goddamn Air Max pluses on. I ain't got no vest. I ain't got no gun.
Right, you're very, yeah, you're, you're vulnerable and you're brave and, and you're right. You should, it's, it's unacceptable.
But Alex, also, you not saying something about that letter hurts.
I, I hear you. Thank you for telling me that. Thank you for telling me that.
The majority of the council members thought it was okay that we could have lost our lives when we know that we have already lost a life because of this. And when we look at our ancestors and the people who came before us, many of them lost their lives and it's that. Same mentality of council members back in Selma, back in Georgia, in, back all over this country. Not sticking up for us when letters like that have gone out in the past, that it puts us those ten steps back. And so you not saying something hurts, because I know what those council members not saying something back then did. And so I'm truly asking you to step up, make a video and get loud about it. Because what happened was an injustice and silence is violence in this day and age.
Especially people in the position of power who are silent, because it's on, you guys make the decisions, what goes on here. Literally, it is you guys. Yes, we can put pressure on you guys and yes, we can tell you guys what the hell to do, but at the end of the day, it boils down to you guys. And this is on you guys to step up as a s- as public servants to all of us and do what the hell we want. Like seriously, you guys literally work for us. You guys serve us. You guys are literally public servants, are you not? You're a public servant. This is the public. We are the public right here, literally telling you what needs to be done. And we shouldn't even have to, because you should come spend time in these neighborhoods and spend time in these communities that we're fighting for. See, because if that, if that happened, we wouldn't have to sit here and tell you nothing. You would know what needs to be done. And that's what, that, that needs to, that needs to change too. See, because we're tired of telling you guys what to do. It's, because there should be no way that you guys are making these decisions hella uninformed. You guys are making so many uninformed decisions that are literally costing people their lives. Black people their lives out here. And it's just like, everybody's oblivious to them. Till now. Till now. But it's been happening here in Seattle. You guys, this council has let it go on.
For too long.
For way too long.
Turn a blind eye.
Too long.
They've been turning the other cheek, turning the other cheek. Quit being Martin and start being Malcolm and stand up. Seriously. Stop turning the other cheek and stand up and fight back. Cause we stood up and fought back. We are the people who literally have the right to rise up and say, hey, this government is not working for us. We need a new one. We literally have that right as people. And it's on you and your responsibility and your duty as a public servant to us to say, you know what? You guys are right. Let's do this. That is literally on you and the rest of the council members to step up and say, this is what you guys want? Well, how the hell do we get there? And let's get there as fast as possible ASAP a mundo. Like dead serious. ASAP a mundo like yesterday ASAP. Hell, four hundred sixty-five years ago ASAP type shit. Do you feel me? Like, that's how fast this needs to happen.
So what did you learn from having this conversation today?
No, seriously.
Very important for you to take.
What did you learn?
To your other fellow.
And what are you gonna take to your family? What are you gonna take to your fellow council member? What are you, what did you learn today?
Uh, do you mean just the discussion we're having about Chief Best?
Sure, sure. If that's what you wanna talk about first, we could talk about that first.
Well, we wanna know your overall learning experience.
Yeah, I, I mean, I thank you for letting me march with you. It was a peaceful march. It was inspiring. You're courageous to come out here and you were getting people to come out into the streets and um it was very, it was very moving for me.
Not like we have a choice, honestly. You know, we're marching for our lives after all.
We're marching for our basic human rights.
We're not courageous and we're not vulnerable. The reason we are vulnerable is because there's racist people out there trying to hurt us. Understand?
Go ahead, finish what you're saying, Alex.
Yeah, yeah. We won't cut over. What else did you learn?
Cause you do got a family to get to.
I, I, I think also, you know, everybody needs to be forthright with you about, you know, like you were saying, like we just, you know, why are you telling us this now? Why, why did we learn about this now? What about, where's the other loophole? Where's the other hurdle? You know, being very forthright with you about that. It's absolutely necessary. And so I'm, I hope we keep talking. A- a- as you go on, you know, as you have these meetings with other council members and something's not sitting right or you want me to do some research on something or whatever, you wanna cross check something, please, I, I'm, I'm at your service.
That's what's up.
That's good to know. Thank you.
That's what's up. That's exactly what we like to hear.
Feel free to come march with us again, especially to Chief Best's house.
Thank you.
And make sure you come up to the E D M marches.
Thank you.
Listen.
Alright.
We know you're one council member, but you as one council member have a lot of power.
You have a lot of influence.
You literally have a lot of power amongst that council. You have a voice. You have a voice that counts, that counts among, that counts in that, in that room with those other council members when it comes down, time to vote for stuff. You have a voice. Now is the time to speak up and use it for the right things, for the right side of history. Because twenty years, your kid are gonna, is gonna ask you, dad, what side of this was you on? What side did you choose?
We're gonna be in the history books, believe that. Without a doubt.
This is, this is literally the biggest civil rights movement in US history since nineteen sixty-five. So this is definitely going down in history for sure. And your kids are gonna wanna know what side you stood on. And I hope that you're gonna be able to tell them that you stood on this side of Black Lives Matter and you stuck up for black lives and you proved it. I hope in twenty years you can tell your kids that, because they are gonna ask you that. They literally are gonna go, come back and watch all this footage from now and ask you, dad, in the end, what side did you stand on? And I hope and I pray that you can tell them that you stood on this side. And that they're proud of you. Because that's every kid's dream, to be proud of their parent for what they accomplished. And I hope with your choices from here on out, make your children proud of you in the future. That's serious. Like, I wish nothing but, but that for you, but I hope you really do end up on the right side of history. Cause this literally is the right side of history, right here in front of you.
Okay.
Thank you for meeting us today.
Let's send Alex out with a quick chant. Defund SPD, how much?
Fifty percent at least.
Where should that money go?
To black communities.
Free, who should you free?
All the protesters.
Don't forget number four.
No new youth still.
What do we want for number five?
Jenny Durkin to resign.
And whose lives matter?
Black lives matter.
Both of you guys, could you download your videos? Cause my phone died and we need to post.
Yeah, you got it, you got it. Alright, everybody. So I'm gonna turn this around. We uh, I should probably put this back on. So we just uh wrapped up at Alex Peterson's house. Shout out to Sophia with all the hard questioning. You guys killed it. What's up, what's up TK? Good to see you babe.
Go, 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 start that up.
So I'm gonna end this livestream in just a minute so we can get this footage up and, and run it. But uh shout out to TK. Shout out to everybody out here asking these hard questions and having these difficult conversations.
We gotta have these hard conversations with these politicians, man. We spoke to.
And you as well. I haven't met you yet, but you did incredible. Okay.
Oh, I'm Abby.
Hi Abby.
I'm talking to the.
Oh my gosh, hi. Joey, good to know you. You were killing it. Honestly, you nailed it. So we are in University District. We are uh.
Hey, that's real, that's real democracy. When you get politicians to come march with you for the whole marching, you walk them home. That's real democracy. People call us what you want. You call us docile. You can call us not doing enough, but literally we got a seat at the table from Alex Peterson and he didn't even agree to defund SPD. But he definitely just gave us a seat at his table for sure.
She didn't mind a guy.
So say what you want, but we getting shit done around here. EDM all day, every day, baby.
Were you uh, were you uh peace, love and solidarity with me on my way out? Alright, everybody. Peace, love, solidarity.
Adios.
Later.